Ask if anybody in the audience has anything to say? No?
So I, can I make an introduction?
Yes, please.
So Veronica Eldredge, she was here last month as well. She is doing some practicum hours with us in Eastmont Player. She's looking, she's at SNH, she's looking to get her administrator's license. So she's been putting in lots of hours, both at school during the day and then at four minutes for the last two meetings. So I just wanted you to know who you got.
Right.
And a lot of you know her.
And she's an Eastmont Phil along.
She's an Eastmont Player alum. She's a teacher at Marytown School. She played self over dersi. Lot of connection, in case you didn't know.
You did start it without me?
Yes.
We may have.
We were waiting and waiting.
But only like a minute ago.
We'd be small people, you would be okay with it.
Keep going, don't.
Well, welcome.
We were just introducing the guests.
Revisions to the agenda? Anybody? Uh, move us to the consent agenda 2.1, approve the minutes of September 26th. Take a motion.
I'll take a motion, I mean, I'll be, make a motion. I'll make a motion to accept, or to whatever.
Approve the minutes.
It's too late.
I'll take a second.
I'll second it.
Um, any discussion of the minutes of September 26th? Did we get spellings and all that correct this time? We did. Not seeing or hearing any discussion. Ready for a vote? All of those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. Thank you. 3.1, student monitoring report.
Were you all able to access the full monitoring report on under Bill's log?
In pieces, parts? Like I found some slides in different parts of it. It wasn't exactly like what he was projecting.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna direct you to a totally different place where you'll see Eastmont Phil years.
Okay.
Given the late hour and the number of slides that I put together, I'm gonna show you the highlights tonight.
Yeah, I like that.
But, so that you all know how to get to the full thirty-something slide presentation if you're interested in looking at a lot more data. If you go to the WCSU site, go to administration, superintendent, superintendent's blog. Then you'll see over on the right hand, it says, um, October monitoring reports.
Oh yeah, I did see them all over there.
Okay, so that's where you'll, but I'm gonna show you because of a number of slides you've already seen tonight from the full presentation. And then a lot of them are just me getting into the weeds with data that I won't waste your time with tonight. But, um, so these are really the highlights. So looking at transferable skills, one of the things that I tried to do, because this is a very similar report as what I shared with you last October, is to do a comparison of where we were a year ago. So looking at the 2018 climate survey data which, which students, families and teachers took in the late spring of 2018, last year. Eighty-five percent of our students in grades one through six believe they work problems out with their peers. And ninety-two percent of students in grades one through six believe they have choices in what they learn. This number has increased from sixty-five percent, um, a year ago. Our climate survey data doesn't, doesn't align well with our transferable skills, but it's really the only place right now we have data on our transferable skills. So I felt like this is important data to share. At the end of this year, our teachers will all have had a whole year of reporting on report cards, the transferable skills, and assessing students. But right now, we just don't have that information. This is a similar slide, um, as of what I shared last year, but it's an update of all that we, we did in the 2017, eighteen years for his professional learning. EMS teachers spent about a hundred and ten hours last year in PD. Whether that was the ninety-minute embedded, um, PD sessions or the ninety-minute Wednesday afternoons. Um, and this is just a list, not an exhaustive list, but, um, it covers most of what we spent our professional time on last year.
Can I ask your question?
Yeah, please do ask questions.
How much time you feel you guys are spending on infinite campus learning and adjusting?
Yeah, so, um, we are, we are, um, using one Wednesday a month for IC as a whole staff. Troubleshooting, just helping each other out. Dave Willard is our IC person, um, in the building. He is spending two hour-long lunch periods a week, like on Mondays and Wednesdays where people just come to his room and it, it's open and he's available to help support. So, I would say on average, a teacher's probably spending about an hour a week maybe on IC.
And do you feel that's sustainable or will turn down because?
It's overwhelming right now. But it's not, but it's because they're learning to do it, really.
What are they doing?
Entering scores into it. So the expectation is that all teachers will enter assignments, their call, but scores into IC at least once every two weeks in every subject. Every single EMS teacher in their goal setting this fall wrote a goal for themselves. So some might have written, I'm gonna learn the tool, right? It's at that level. Some might have written, I am going to enter in assignments for, at, once a week. Some goals were really more around what it is. They wanted to report to parents, not the tool, but the information provided, so.
For the parent portal?
It's all parent portal.
Okay.
It's all entering in assignments, which they, so they've had their traditional paper grade books. It's used in the electronic grade book. Any other, and please stop me as we go through. So, this next slide is, um, specific to EMS. On the left, you're gonna see similar to what you saw in the cafeteria. But this is what I had shared a year ago, where we were with report card, local and Sback, um, as far as triangulation and where we are now. Very similar to SU. Our teachers are, um, scoring students. My, my assumption, similar to Bill's, is a little bit harder than our local assessments and Sback measures. This is literacy.
We should, yeah. Is the, uh, what's being taught in the classroom aligning with the Sback and the 360?
So that's the goal that ours, that our report cards now, so the, since you, um, left, our report card language has completely changed.
Yeah.
Which should be in alignment with the other two.
With the other two.
Yeah.
But is what's being taught in the classroom changed as well?
Y- well, yes.
Do you see what I'm saying?
To re, yes, to reflect, yeah, we're students, yes. That's the goal. And it, and it looks as though it's happening in literacy. My next slide that I'm gonna show you isn't quite the same. Similar to what we saw in math, there's still a discrepancy in what our teachers are seeing and assessing on a daily basis, um, in math, and what our local and Sback assessments are, the data that that's giving us. So it came down slightly from eighty percent to, I think that's sixty-seven percent. But we're still, in math, our teachers are scoring students as doing, um, being more proficient than our local assessments or Sback.
Both of those got closer to the Sback.
Well, both are, yes, both did, yes.
Can I ask, right, so, uh, besides not having enough time for math teaching, uh, does that mean that they might have, uh, not as high expectations as they have in literacy in math? Could that play into that because there's no?
You, you could, you know, make that.
Yes, Bill.
I don't know if we have the data to draw that. Say there's not an alignment by what's assessed, recorded, and assessed. We have to go again, Alicia may have that from her walk-throughs, but she's in the classroom a lot more. But we haven't, we don't have the, quantitative data doesn't give you the lie.
But don't.
Qualitative data gives you the lie.
So, but don't we have more data now in our data well for where students are in both literacy and math better? Or is math still less than literacy?
We're, we're still lacking data in math. We, um, this fall, we triangulated data just on our fall assessments. We looked at, um, the STAR 360 measure and we looked at teacher, kind of teacher judgment, which would be report cards. And as far as other assessments go, we're kind of all over the place. Some grades up to, up to grade two, we're using the PNOA math assessment. Beyond grade two, we don't have other great measures that we're using. That, that could be something, a conclusion you come to. I'm gonna share another report card slide in just a minute. That I think will help explain a little bit of it as well. So the blue, um, the blue bar was the data on our report cards from 2016, 17. And the red is from this past year. So I'll let you look at that for just a minute. One thing that this is telling me and the, the math and literacy goes in with that for the report cards is, we, our teaching is more aligned, Ellen, your question, to the SLOs, what we're, what we're reporting on. I think that as individuals, we sometimes have a tendency to get the benefit of the doubter score higher. If you look at the blue, last year when I reported this, it was eighty percent or greater in every subject for, that, you know, students were proficient. We know that's not the case. And if you look at this past year's data, I think that's a more realistic view because we're assessing to measures that we just didn't have before with the report card data. We knew our report cards needed to change, right? So this is following similar to Bill's slide, two cohorts of students over time. Our current sixth graders and our current seventh graders. At the bottom, um, it, it's hard to read, but that's from 2015 through 2018, so it's three years' worth of data. What you wanna see is a, is a jump up between thirty and forty points per year. So the goal or the hope would be that the students would gain about sixty to sixty-five points growth over the period of time. A huge celebration, similar to what we saw with SU data, is our students are growing at a higher rate than that in literacy. And just to remind you, the black line is proficient. The yellow line is where ours, the median score for EMS. So we are scoring above proficient, um, over time following these two, two cohorts of students. And this is a comparison, um, free and reduced lunch and non. I did not do IUP students following cohorts because our numbers were so small. But if you look at our non-free and reduced lunch students as third graders, and then again as sixth graders, um, they made a hundred and thirty points worth of growth. And our third graders and sixth graders free and reduced lunch made a hundred fifty-seven points worth of growth. This is a huge celebration for us. Our, um, potentially at-risk students, our free and reduced lunch students are making greater growth than those not identified.
Well, we should have been zoned out on all the data, but is that just the Sback and the?
This is, thank you, yeah, this is Sback.
This is not teacher assessment?
This is only Sback. So the, these, um, slides that look like this with the yellow and black lines are all, only Sback data.
We can do this with our report card data and then give a scale score beyond those kinds of analysis. Local assessments and, um, Sback. We should have, right here.
And a hundred and fifty-seven points translate to, like you were doing with the, what it's, yeah.
So I'll, I'm gonna show you a slide on that in my analysis, but, so you're looking for at least ninety points in these slides. Ninety points would be, um, three years' worth of growth. Our students are growing. It's, it's a, it actually ends up being two and a half years' worth of growth every two years, but, um, I'll share that with you in just a minute. Did you want?
Well, I don't need an answer, but will we be able to draw some correlations between the tier, the additional tier?
Interventions.
Interventions that we're doing in that, by town meeting?
Same word.
Well, I mean, as we continue to defend that program, does it look like some of this data would be, some of this improvement that we're seeing, that we could make a correlation between our, our dedication of resources to that? Well, no, the outcomes from that are, are being reflected in some of this data that we're seeing.
Yes, I'm gonna share with you an activity that I did with the staff in looking, so we went through the very long thirty-slide presentation. And I'm gonna share some, um, questions that came about from them and some next steps for us in looking at the data. We, this report, because, well, one of the reasons because our reports needed to be consistent across the issue, and not every school has the same interventions, they all look different. So what you're seeing is, I'm, I'm only using free and reduced lunch. Could we pull out those students receiving interventions and look at their data? Yes, but it's not for tonight.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Whatever the data is, if, I mean, so this is a tiny snapshot that we're seeing. But, I, I mean, my feeling is, you know, like maximum kudos to our staff.
The literacy.
You know, I'm looking at free, free reduced, free and reduced lunch that, you know, our, our, our mean or average, whatever, whatever that yellow line is.
The median.
Median has moved in those three years from below proficient to above proficient.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I, we're moving the needle, finally. So some of my frustration shared at the full board. If I'd had this report previously, I wouldn't have been quite as frustrated. Okay. Anyway, thank you.
Um, so just some analysis from those slides. Our report cards are much more aligned with local and Sback. Those numbers up there show the sixty-one, sixty-six and seventy-one percent, that's the alignment of this current, this year. Um, and that's where we were a year ago. Eighty-seven percent is what teachers believed students were proficient and Sback was telling us sixty. So we are getting a much better alignment. Four years of Sback data indicates our students are doing better each year in literacy. So, and it's an average, and you don't have this slide, but it's in the full. So basically, our students in literacy are gaining an average of thirty-four scale points each year, which is over a year's growth, um, which is great. EMS median scores continue to be above proficient, which is similar to the SU. We do continue to have a discrepancy in our scores of free and reduced and non. Following two cohorts of students, our free and reduced students are gaining skills actually at a greater rate than those who have not been identified, which is huge. And then following two cohorts over time, students have made at least two and a half years' worth of growth in ELA in two years' time.
What is the percentage of free and reduced now?
I'm mid twenties. We always hover around twenty-four, twenty-six percent. Now onto math. Very similar slide, this is using Sback data, black line is proficient. So this is following two cohorts again, our current sixth graders and our current seventh graders in math over time. The goal being that they would make sixty points worth of growth in two years is, um, is two years' worth of growth. So our current sixth graders are, are right around two years' worth of growth in two years and our current seventh are just under. And as you can see, our yellow median line is, uh, looks a lot different than it does in literacy and math.
So that last number went down?
Yeah.
That means?
Our, our, the current seventh graders, our last year's sixth graders performed worse than they had the year before.
Okay.
Does it, does it have anything to do with being in a new school or?
So this is last, last, so they are now in seventh, but they took this at the end of sixth grade.
So that's six, five, four.
So that answers my question too, which is whether there was some topic area that we were missing with that guy.
Didn't our, didn't our interventions drop throughout that period of time?
That did, that did happen. That did happen. Yep.
Last year they did?
Yep.
We had a decrease in FTEs for interventions last year.
In math?
Yes.
I thought Anne moved into that.
She, she was a classroom teacher in third grade and sixth grade, two hours in her day. So she ended up, um, our FTEs and interventions in math declined greatly last year.
That's, that was one of the things that we addressed in budget.
Do you remember I showed you that, um, that data and I said?
Yeah, back up.
We had some data to share last year that was looking good and I was worried it may not look so good.
But that also reminds me of what we learned, not learned, but we learned when we went to the board training hall together that that, you know, having that, the teacher that can address the ninety percent, you know, like, the.
High quality tier.
High quality tier one.
Yes.
It's crucial because if the interventions fall, that, it's, it's critical.
It is.
So while correlation is not necessarily causation, it's an interesting correlation.
Well, I mean, it suggests that we can get the job done with the resources that were available in literacy. And with the same amount of resources, we can't get the job done in math.
Uh, our resources aren't the same in literacy and math. We had a full-time reading interventionist and we did not. That was a point five and a point two in math.
Okay.
So, not full-time. Our reading and literacy interventionist was a fifty percent and our math interventionist is twenty percent.
Okay.
And what are they now, fifty and fifty?
Now, I have to do a time study, so can you hold that and make sure I come back to it? Cause that's a really good question, but it will lead me on a tangent that I think is important for you to hear. This is looking also at non-free and reduced and free and reduced students, same exact cohort of, of students. These are our, they're now in seventh grade, but as third graders where they were performing non-free and reduced and then as sixth graders. And then as third graders and sixth graders, those identified as, um, potentially at-risk students. So the, the point, the goal point is ninety points worth of growth, it's three years. Our, so our non-free and reduced are doing, they're making about three years' worth of growth in three years and our, um, in this particular cohort, we're not making the same gains. Same exact kids we're talking about in literacy as in math. So my analysis of, of looking at all of this data is our report cards are slightly more aligned and you can see those, um, numbers compared, comparing this year to last year at this time. Four years of Sback data show that EMS median is at or below proficient in all grades. Our scores in math have actually declined since 2014 and fifteen, um, in looking at Sback alone. There continues to be a discrepancy in math for our free and reduced and non. And then following two cohorts over time, our free and reduced lunch students are not making the same gains. So it's the, um, total opposite of what we saw in literacy. Before I go on, cause I'm, uh, let me go back to your question, Dorsey. So what we do every fall, we give the fall assessments and then we get together as grade level teams with all of the interventionists and we look at the data and we decide who needs what for interventions, specifically in literacy and math. So both of our interventionists are highly skilled to teach math or literacy. So it's not really a fifty-fifty kind of a thing. It's, an example would be, um, you know, we may have a grade level that has barely any literacy needs. And by the time they get to fourth through sixth grade, that's the case. They're, they're readers, right? They're pretty strong and our scores support that, but they may, they may both have to be doing math interventions, right? So it's not a matter of, um, anymore, we have a math person and a reading person. They're just giving interventions to kids in whatever, which of those two subjects they need. So it's kind of a shift in, um, so their FTEs are the same, right? We have, we have the two bodies.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, another example is in our first grade right now, um, they're both giving math interventions. So our intervention block really isn't in literacy because our teachers are feeling like they can meet the needs in the classroom. But when we do reteach, it's only in math. So it really varies depending on, not necessarily personnel, but what the date, what the kids, if that makes sense.
It's based on the data.
Right.
To what degree can you disaggregate this data in terms of, like, if you look at it from a professional development lens?
Yeah.
For example? Can you see trends and up and downs? And, I mean, I assume if you can see that, that you address it in some way.
So Bill was right when he said, and it was actually, um, nine and ten years ago that we put a lot of focus in literacy instruction. And the teachers really, I think, especially at the elementary level, you go into teaching and you're, you know you're gonna be teaching reading, right? And writing. As you go up in grades, um, so a lot, so first of all, a lot of focus was put into professional development back when you were here, Lindy, around first instruction of reading. What does it look like? We use the readers and writers workshop model, we have had a ton of professional development in it, we have programs that we use, um, in reading and writing. A lot of time has been spent in PD around that. Our scores show that. This, that, that has not happened in math in the same way. We don't have a program and you'll see later on, we're piloting and we need to have one. And teachers' comfort level or interest in teaching math is not quite the same. I have teachers who just would rather not teach math. So we're departmentalizing as early as kindergarten and as high as fifth and sixth grade, but, um, we haven't thrown everything we have into it, like we have with literacy and, um, and our scores are reflecting that. I, my personal belief is a huge piece of that is the program. When the program went away, which was around 2014, 15, regardless of what you have to say about the program we were using, it was something. And when teachers were left to create and figure out on their own, um, our, our scores kind of plummeted and.
What was the, I mean, what was the reasoning of the program then?
It wasn't alignment with Common Core. So there were, there were good reasons for it, but it also, um, was to the detriment of our students because teachers were floundering. And, I mean, you can speak to that, Ellen. We spent hours and days, you know, talking about math and finding materials and looking at websites and trying to create and, um, our time and energy were not spent in the right ways. Where if we had something in common to look at and as a guide and to use and to tweak.
Yeah.
As a framework, similar to what we've done with the Teachers College in reading and writing, I don't believe our scores would.
So is there anybody looking into that?
So, yes. The good news is there is a pilot going on this fall. Almost every single one of the Eastmont Player teachers asked to be on that and are on that pilot. So they're piloting a number, a couple of different programs, two different programs, um, with the goal that we will have a program next fall. But I think that, that what we're seeing in scores is a direct result of teachers just trying to do the best they could with what they had and.
I may have just missed what you said, but is that pilots, ASU Y or is it? Okay.
My dreams of paper.
I, I feel for the teachers. So looking at, um, and I wanna share with you some rationale behind this, cause you saw the table in Bill's packet.
Yeah, we didn't spend time talking about that.
So we have a total of a hundred and fifty-five students in grades one through six. On, in September, fifty-one percent of those students were proficient. And by June, we believe seventy-four percent should be proficient. Of those students, we believe seventy-nine percent will make at least one year's growth. Now, let me tell you how these numbers were developed and then kind of the thinking, it, it goes right along with your conversation about guarantees. So I sat down, I had every single teacher fill this statement out for their children, looking at the data that we have. Thinking about who their kids are as learners, um, who do they know can become proficient? Who might be a stretch, but they wanna get them there? And then who are those students who we need to keep moving? We need to keep moving along, but they're not sure that they're gonna hit. If, if you're in the red and you are way below proficient, to become proficient by, by June of this year. May not be attainable. Um. In looking at that table, there's a, a wide range of where people hope. Where schools hope their students will be. From us being the lowest of seventy-nine percent of our students will make one year's gain to a hundred percent of students in some buildings. And Flore came to me earlier today and she said, you know, what is this? Why are we so low? And. I think the way that, that we have talked about writing goals and my background in special ed is you write goals that are specific, measurable and attainable. Um, I don't believe, I think that a hundred percent is a wonderful goal to have. I don't believe. That we will have a hundred percent of our students in that place in eight months.
I think Flore, some of those. Targets, some of those goals you've seen, some boards I know have adopted guarantees. Those could be a reflection of boards that adopted guarantees. That's why it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, and I was just wondering, because I could see, I, I thought that there might be something wrong with it there, because when you go, when it said September, a percent of students proficient. We were by far, you know, not by a lot, but you know, quite a bit. Fifty-one percent, we had the highest proficiency. So then I was like, if we have the highest proficiency, we don't. Have as many students to get up in the growth. So I, I was just, it was, it was just a question. I was satisfied with that attainable. You know, I, I think, I, I agree with you that having something more specific that is attainable.
I think we just, we just have to see what the results are.
I, that's what I said, I said, I think it will be very interesting at the end of the year to see where we all land. Um, you know, my hope is that we're above seventy-nine percent and we're, you know, pleasantly surprised and we've moved more students than we believe. Could have moved in a year. Um. It goes back to that conversation, Ruben, you and Bill and I had where you said a community member had asked you, like, how can you ever say a hundred percent? Are, are going to be, right? That means my child's always gonna fail because they're never gonna be, they're never gonna make that hundred percent and. It's just two different ways of looking at it.
By extension is always going to, it's like no child left behind, which I'm very mindful. Of setting a goal that looks or smells anything like that. I, I do not wanna set teachers up to fail. Any more than I wanna set students up to fail.
That's why we're looking at a growth model.
Right, I, I like the growth model and Matt made a good comment in our group discussion about. You know, maybe the guarantee is something like, you know, some high ninety percentage of students. Will team these goals, but every student will make. Some um, acceptable level of progress each year, right? So that, we can, we can acknowledge that. This isn't a no child left behind kind of goal, but we're definitely going to make growth happen. Right, we, we may not get everybody over the finish line because we acknowledge that reality is reality. But we're not going to just give up on that one student who. Isn't gonna ever cross the line and say, you know what, we're just putting our resources somewhere else. And likewise, we're not going to take all of our resources from the students that are already over the line and just leave them there. We want those students to be growing as well.
That's true. And that was one thing that, that, that I talked to the teachers about. We had students, um. Looking at last year's growth report. We have students who are in, uh, above proficient in math who may have made. Four or five points worth of growth in a year. And I said to the teachers, so what, you know, what are they doing? Just sitting there, putting in seat time? Like, they need to be making thirty points worth of growth just as much as the student who's struggling. It's not acceptable to say, well, just because they've already got it, you know, they're good to go. You need to be making sure, like you said, every student is making adequate growth.
As, as, as or if we discuss guarantees. Uh, I, I'm adverse to guaranteeing outcomes. I think we guarantee opportunities. Because you have to acknowledge part of the outcome is individual. And you, you can't guarantee what an interview is gonna do, but you can guarantee. The opportunities that we're gonna provide to students. And they don't have to be equal, they can be equitable, right, so.
I have just maybe wanted to, um. So here's our current state. The teachers continue to participate in P D through embedded P D weekly after. Or Wednesday afternoons and then individual coaching sessions. Our report card data, local assessments and ESPEC are becoming more closely aligned. Um, ESPEC data is showing that students are doing better in E L A than in math, especially those who are at risk. Um, our free and reduced lunch students are making greater gains than those not identified in E L A. Um, like I said, our math scores have declined over the last four years. And transferable skills continue to be taught and assessed. And my hope is that next October, I will share with you some real data around that.
I'm having a, what is E L A?
English language.
Thank you.
This is.
Having a vocabulary moment, thank you.
The desired state. Um, the goal is that all students will make at least one year's growth in math, right? That is, that is where we do want to be. Um, that we will have a common math program to support our math instruction, similar to what we have in reading and writing. That we will have, Jen talked about this earlier, we'll have local common assessments for each S L O. We don't. The gap between our at-risk students and those who are not will decrease in all subjects, in all grades. Um, we'll continue our coaching in academic behavior and technology. Um, the M T S S, Stephen, what you were, you were talking about, our interventions and. All of that will be in place for students who need that academically and behaviorally. Um, and this last bullet is around our parent portal and opening that up that, that parents and families will actually understand where their students are at at any given time.
How are you teaching parents how to do that?
So we have had, um, uh, at parent information night in early September. We had a huge, a huge majority of our parents come. Arlen did six sessions with parents. Um, twenty-minute sessions throughout the course of the night where she did training. Then, um, she took that training and did kind of screenshots through and walked them, walk parents through I C. That's been in the newsletter a few times. That's gone out to families, so if you didn't, weren't able to go, here's how. Um, we've had parents come in and just do individual sessions. Fortunately, we have a lot of fam, we have a lot of new families, but we also have a lot of families at U thirty-two who the portal is not new.
Yeah. How are you making sure that you reach the parents that really need that access to that data?
I think classroom teachers would.
They have. So at open house, that was a piece of it, um, especially the, a parent teacher conference is coming up. There's a piece around the portal. I feel like we have, and I'll have to look at the percentage. We have a, a large percentage of our parents. So there's a form you have to fill out in order to get on. A large percentage of our families have done that. So they, they at least taken the first step and we're already getting some of our teachers. Communication from families about assignments, which means they're looking at them.
Just going back to one of the things that you said in the phone meeting, which is, you know, those. Engaging those students and families that are really struggling. How, how do we make sure that, um, they access those tools that are available?
Can they get a full version of the?
You can, you can get, you. It's not. You can get some information on your phone. It doesn't look the same.
It doesn't look the same and I don't know, I mean, it might just be a kindergarten thing because we're, the assessments are slightly different, but I don't know. You've seen it, but, um, I was like, Jill had posted something and I was like. Sixty and out of what? And she's like, what? It doesn't show you. So I took screenshots. Of, of my phone and of the web and you had no idea what the, it was out of. So she ended up putting it in the comments.
Yes.
Which.
Yes, we did that in October.
Right, which is, is great, but it's still a struggle. I mean, for me, I'm like. That's annoying, I have to go all the way. I mean, not, I hate the phone app anyways, but, cause you can't do anything on it, but, um. It's, it's an interest.
She brought that up at our in-service in October. So it's definitely a lot of learning from, on the teachers end and parents. What works, what's useful, what's helpful, what doesn't work, what makes it more confusing. It's all starting to kind of surface as we're using it. But that's a, that's a good point about those who. Um, need it and maybe don't necessarily have access to it, um. That we need to be thoughtful.
It's just something to think about, like, it's not something that I expect an answer to.
Do you find that the, the parents that need the communication also come to parent teacher conferences? Or do you feel like?
We really, we have, it's, our parents are amazing. They come to pretty much everything. Um. And even those families who can't make it, you know, they might, their kids might go to C C after school and we meet with them, well. You know, before they pick them up from C C or, you know, at different times, but. We have more phone conferences, you know, we, we have really good. Um, parent participation, whether it's conferences or, you know, other. Other way, like open house last week, you know, just coming in to look at your, your children's work. They, our parents care very much how their children are doing, which is wonderful. We're lucky in that sense. Um. So this is, this is the hope for this year, that um, instructional coaching will continue. We now have, and Lindy had asked this question, um, so Anne Carter stepped out of Eastmont Pillar. But is spending some time with us in her role as the W C S U math coach. Um, identifying a common math program is a goal for this year. Continue. So this is a big one and this goes to the D M G report. The blocks of time for our students who need interventions in multiple areas. That's a huge issue for us and we're trying to work through that. Um, so that they're not missing tier one instruction, but that they're getting interventions where they need it. Um. We have started really using um, triangulation of data this year and will continue to do that. And then all of the wonderful opportunities around transferable skills. And finally, the board, um, what can you do? Continue to support us around the, our tiered instruction for students. Um, hold me accountable for making sure that the teachers are getting what they need in order to, um. Provide that high-quality instruction for students. Um, keeping the implementation plan in our C I P at the forefront of our conversations. Um, and offer guidance on what your priorities are for us as a school. Um, we've talked a lot about ways to have the board share information with families in, um, in the community. And then continue to be the supportive and informative board that we are.
A budget question? As you're looking at these math programs, are you looking at purchasing? A, I mean, that would be a big budget item if a. Caned program was bought in math. Those aren't as cheap as Cockens writing and reading units type things.
So there's some that we're looking at that are free. Um, and then there's others that have a cost to them. We have this, this math pilot crew. What Bill has told us is, um. Basically not to worry about that in our local budgets right now. So that is a very good Bill Kimball question. I don't have the answer for that. I'm not on the pilot. Um, I know that another principal, um, the principal at Berlin, Erin, had asked that exact question, you know, should we be thinking about this? And he said. Um, we don't need to think about it at the local level now. I don't know if there's S U money they're looking to shift into, um. That, I, I don't have an answer to that.
I remember going through a couple of adoptions when I was working at Eastmont Pillar, when they went from everyday math to some other math or. And it's, it's a huge cost. So thinking about that is something, I mean, to me, that's a board kind of thing is budget.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing through all of this is you're having your, um, you know, what I think about all of this is. There's a wealth of P D going on at your school with your ninety-minute block, your early release time, as well as all your S U time. So. There should be some expertise and some real knowledge as far as, I think that should be an expectation with that much P D time built into the system.
Yeah.
Um, that's not normal in other systems.
Yeah.
So I think that's something to keep, I'm not saying cut it or anything else, I'm just saying that needs to be remembered. That.
Teachers are spending a lot of time with each other and learning from each other. Yeah, that's very true.
Concerning the math program that may or may not be heard. Um, and others can weigh in, but as being one of the fiscally conservative people. Um, I would want, I would expect to hear from you what's the best option.
Yeah.
And not be concerned about cost. And if it's, you know, a million dollars, then the board's gonna say, no, we can't do it.
But that's why they're piloting.
But I mean, literally, if the difference is between five thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars.
We need to go for better.
I thought that's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Right, from my perspective, if ten thousand dollars is exactly what we need and what the staff. Fully feels like what's gonna work best. You know, ten thousand more bucks is like.
We need to put the resources in.
Yeah.
Um, so.
But I think you need to hear from us that, find out what's best and tell us that.
Right.
And you've heard it from Stephen. From the fiscally responsible one.
From the cutter, from the hacker.
I didn't even have to.
No, I am waiting to hear back from this, the pilot committee, who also, Ellen Dorsey and Anne Carter and Jen Miller-Huson are all part of that. You know, so we principals are relying on them to share that information back with us as they pilot it with their students. Um, and I don't know the exact timeline of that, but I know it's in people's minds around budget. And we'll share with you and I know more. I think that's it.
Well, I just wanted to say thank you, cause it's a lot of work and, you know, it's. It's very informative. It's, it's super informative and, you know, and, you know, thank you for clarifying that. To attain a local, which makes me, you know, I think I'm so, I'm super proud of the work that we're doing. And we have to please thank everybody on our behalf, you know, cause it's. You know, they're, they're working really hard and as dreadful as the math, you know, we have the eye on the ball now, so we're like.
No, the scores are dreadful.
No, the scores, no, math is, yeah, and that's great. I, I did see on the, the one question I forgot to ask is like, we, we did have a column for science.
So we, because, so Jen shared with you, we did not get any.
Okay, cause there was no.
We piloted it in the spring, so we don't have anything to report. Um. And as she said, it was very rigorous and I'm guessing that when I report to you in a year, um, we do this year. That'll be another topic of conversation.
They did announce at the meeting, Jen was there two days ago, yesterday, maybe we were in Capitol Plaza yesterday. The A O E is going to release either district or S U, not in a, I don't know how this is. Data from that test statewide in December, I think they said, which nobody had expected.
Okay.
But they said there is going to be some sort of, not student level, but. And because we are all individual districts, when they use the word district, I don't really know if.
Right.
Cause that would be a school level in our S U, so it may be school level, I don't know. But there will be some data from that science test. Not only was it rigorous, it was very confusing as to how it worked.
Yes, it was.
And they are now going to be two complete sess- sections instead of the way it was last time. So one will end and another one will begin versus a kid sits down and does the whole two sessions without you realizing, wait, this was supposed to be two days.
Or they thought they were done and it just kept going and going and going.
So they have fixed that, they said at that meeting.
Well, that's good.
And then one last thing, would you mind, because it's being recorded, sharing the event that just happened at Eastmont Pillar with the coding of the kids.
Oh, my gosh, we've had so much happen at Eastmont Pillar, um.
Oh, and today.
We've had W C A X come to us three times in the last three weeks. So, uh, last week, we had, I don't know if you saw it, um, Thursday, yeah, night of open house, um. Some of your children are already on with him. Governor Scott came and held a press conference in our library, his, his usual press conference. But the topic was around coding, um, and this hour of code, it's called, where students from all over, um. Governor Scott asked what coding was and if you don't know. Basically, everything that goes into making something work or run, right, programming it, um, our students do. Basically, everything that goes into making something work or run, right, programming it, um, our students do a lot of that. And so we had students from grades one, two, three, and six come and teach, um, him. And many members of the AOE how to code and what that looks like at the first grade level and what that looks like at sixth grade level. Um, it was awesome and it was a great afternoon. They spent about two and a half hours with us. Um, and then today we had them come, WCAX came back. And they are doing a report, I'll let you know when it's coming out, on trauma-informed schools and, um. PBIS in elementary schools, so they interviewed, um, Dave Lerner, sixth grade teacher, they interviewed students, they, um. Kind of, um, recorded a circle. They, the sixth grade class circled up and talked about PBIS and what that means to them. They interviewed Kelly Bushy, they came here and talked to some students about restorative practice and what that looks like at this level. And they're gonna be interviewing Dave Melnick and they're gonna put together a piece, um, in the next couple of weeks, so that's very exciting. Also, today, Washington World came with the, um, Rotary Club. And some students from the, um, Center Armont Career Center. And they planted apple trees in honor of David Coburn. So they planted two trees in two different spots. David was, uh, huge, as you know, um, part of Eastmont Pillar. And he was part of the Rotary, brought, um, dictionaries to students, talked about the history of Eastmont Pillar for many years. Um, so we have two trees planted in his honor, um, that happened today, so pictures will be in the Washington World on that. So we had some. There's one up kinda near the sidewalk, near the, the loop where you park. And then there's one, we have a gap, you probably noticed in the maple tree, so on the left, right there, where we had to take one down. If you are interested in looking at a lot more slides, there's a lot more data, you can go on.
And Phil Scott's publicist, publicist or something put a lot of pictures from it on, I think it was on Facebook.
It was on Facebook.
And I was, I was at the VSBA conference and I, I told Alicia, the Dan French came in. And he was like, the first thing he said, he came over and talked to me and said like, you know, he was really pleased and he wanted to come back. Yeah, they, so, yeah, the Secretary of Education was there too, and he was super pleased and wanted to come back to the school and was very impressed.
A lot of men in suits and it was so cute because one of the first creatures said, I met with twelve governors today. No, they weren't all the governor, but they looked like they could've been.
Lacy was terrified.
Yeah, she was.
And then she came home and she was like, he didn't even know what coding was.
So he's coming back for reteach?
A little bit of levity behind us, um, thank you for that, that was really helpful. Um, Act Forty Six update.
Are, are there any questions, I guess, because we.
Is there anything that we need to cover that we didn't cover in the full board?
I, I don't think, I think the biggest thing is the timeline. For, 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 uh, we, we gave Bill, I, I would say about ten or eight questions on. Uh, representation on the, on, on the borders that somebody resigned from Berlin to. Uh, so you're just getting some things on writing to make sure that we can do what we wanna do. And the timeline is just so compressed. So, so we wanna know there's ways that we, let's say they announce on November thirtieth. That we can turn around and start being proactive now, on how to get to, how to get to the end. End point, anyway, and then whatever work we're doing is advisory to, to the transitional board, right? Cause we don't, we are not at seven oh six B.
I think the impression was at the full board meeting that formed them was it's. Probably not gonna be advisory, it's probably gonna be what the decisions will be based on.
Yeah, but because we don't have, because we are not at seven oh six B, we. Technically do not have the authority, that's the way that we are operating, but.
You don't have any authority, but you're still gonna make specific.
Oh, and that's what we're, and, and that's, so I'm not trying to diminish what we're doing, but I'm also trying to be very careful of the. Language that, that we're using and that is all, you know, obviously depending on what they're gonna say on November the thirtieth.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Um, some of it relates to what Alicia was just talking about with Governor Scott coming and the coding program. And, um, also the lovely ECO harvest day. Um, does Eastmont Pillar have a higher? Tech budget that puts money into coding? And does Eastmont Pillar have, um. Taxpayer money pay for ECO? Are we the only school of the five elementaries that has ECO? Are we the only one that has coding? Um, and what will happen with Act Forty Six when there's one tech budget? And, you know, if people do fundraising, where does that fundraising money go? Does it go into one giant pot or does, does it keep it? I mean, what happens?
Well, I would think the fundraising would be similar to a PTO or PTA, which each school would have their own. And have those kinds of funds, I don't know, I don't know.
We don't, yeah, I don't think, I don't think.
None of that has been.
Until agreements are reached, no one has any answer.
Those would be on the forefront of discussion though, I would.
But does Eastmont Pillar pay any money for ECO?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Okay, so, and the rest is fundraisers?
Yes.
And so what about the coding for the, the robotics?
Uh, a lot through grants, um, over the years has been through grants and then we, every school has a tech budget, which is pretty similar.
Pretty much the same. So you could, I mean, you know, it, it's a question, can you write a grant just for your school? Or does it have to be for the new thing, I mean?
Right, grant would be written for the new district. And the advantage, the advantage is being a larger district to qualify for more grants.
I guess I have a question for Governor Scott that he was so, uh, emboldened to say he didn't vote for the Berlin School budget.
Or the WCSU budget?
Well, he's also very outspoken about the higher spending schools and we are one. So there he was touting it and I looked at it and said, did anybody tell him we're one of the highest spending schools when he's there touting it? I, I just think, you know.
And, but, and I don't think that conversation is gonna change, he is physically, you know, he's physically conservative, you know, so we don't know what he's gonna do. We have very little control of how we're gonna use our money anyways, because depending on how they change. Uh, you know, if they do a move like they did this year on reducing educational fund, we'd be looking at numbers completely different too.
I mean, that's, that's the question.
Regardless of Act Forty Six.
Is everybody gonna go down? To get everybody, our schools gonna go down to get those up, or is everybody gonna go up? You, you see what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, yeah, yes. It's a concern.
Is that that, that is a possibility.
And it would be a shame, I tend to lean optimistic sometimes.
I've worked in budgets where it was one budget and schools had personal money, but it's something that has to be. Because of. That school having fundraisers or having grants specific to their whatever.
I mean, about the ten thousand dollars that music program, I mean.
Again.
Current, current gifts and funds go forward under Act Forty Six, they remain at the district. And fundraising that's current remains at the school.
Those are good questions.
But they're good, but yeah.
So technically, we're just as a town gonna have a raffle.
Yeah, and, and it's all gonna be about culture, you know, just like it took a while, you know, depending on where we go, I'm not assuming that we're gonna be consulted, but. I can see some of the writing on the wall, we, it's, it's how that culture develops and how do we do. How do we do budgeting together, right? How do we don't feel like we're giving to Paul Peter, you know, like we, and, and it's sort of how we. Rationalize that we're all interconnected, whether we want it or not.
Um, part of me thinks that Bill had mentioned in the, towards the end, that he's gonna be asking us for an audit. About, of how our time is spent and what our schedules look like, um. You know, and I think one of the goals of Act Forty Six is to, for equal opportunities for students, right? So, you know, I think that audit, similar to the, how much each building is worth and how, what are our assets and our. Um, our debts, it will just give us more information of where we're all starting. I don't know what, what others, I know, yes, there are other schools that have ECO, I don't know who they are or what, you know, what.
What extent?
Because we've just never done that kind of an audit as an SU, but I'm thinking it's all coming.
And there were a couple of super intones presenting at the VSBA meeting and one of them that from the Maple Run, I forgot his name right now, and he said that. There's, through the process, his schools haven't changed that much, that there's a school that offers PE, I forget what it is said, it was like two days that. We, and he said that, that, that character, that flavor is not something that he has, like, tried to dis- destroy. Or, or change, you know, like the flavor of different schools is still.
That's what I see.
Yeah, it's still, it's still there, so, it's, so it's depending what culture we create and what, you know, leadership we have for that, so. It doesn't necessarily mean that we are all gonna be cookie cutter schools, right? That not every school, it, there's so many. Yeah, I, I, I get it, I get it, Ellen, but. That's not what we're striving for.
I think that's fair to say, and I, I don't think that's what any school in the district wants. So, you know, I think, uh, I don't think any community wants it. And so I, I. Again, I remain optimistic, but if that's what it comes to.
About Forty Six?
Okay, good on Act Forty Six?
Yeah.
Um, reports to the board, administration?
You've already heard.
Fiscal report?
I don't know if you have any questions, it's in the full board packet.
Anybody have any questions on the fiscal report? Alrighty, action agenda rescind Eastmont Pillar policies, C one board meeting, agenda preparation, meetings and distribution. C two, regular board meetings, C three, public participation at board meetings, D one, personnel recruitment, selection, appointment and background check. D ten, public complaints about personnel.
I assume, I assume these are all out of date policies that are just on the books.
You would know.
These are the ones from the policy committee and that's what, when we went through, we found things like the, um. Background check, all of that has changed since these were written and they've been updated with the VSBA ones that we've been passing. So they needed to just be taken off of the books. I recommend that we rescind these policies. This summer, what they did.
Second to motion.
They went through the books and as we did the recommended and required through VSBA. There were other ones in our books that. They are, we don't do them, they don't do them that way.
And there's only one thing I need to hear, this is that you recommend.
I recommend it.
You're the only one here, that knows, right? Anyone else thoroughly?
Any discussion? Ready for a vote? All those in favor, please say aye. Abstain, nay, nay abstain, thanks. Um, five point two, approve retirement opt out for teachers.
This has to be on here. And I don't want to live it. You've done it twice in my nine years, um.
It's just something we do every year? What, what are we opting out that people can not be in the retirement system or, no, what does this mean?
And we allow certain teachers to early retire.
Oh, that early retirement sounds different to me than opt out.
Our, uh, teachers.
Yeah, the wording of this made me think it wasn't early retirement, the buyout kind of thing.
Um, I asked Bill, cause I noticed it tonight and he said it's just, it needs to be on there, you need to take action on it every year.
So if we're, could you explain, we're voting for this.
I'm recommending that you do not.
Because.
Do we just take no action or do we have to actively decline?
There are no teachers have come forward and I think that you would, the language is.
It's weird, that's what I'm asking.
So, no, so that is the typical language. And then if we were gonna recommend something, there would be, we will allow. X number of staff.
Three staff members to.
That can exercise that option.
To get paid to retire, basically.
So what this is saying is that we're not extending any. Extra benefits to retire early, you can retire, but.
Right, but you're not getting any salary for a few years. So if we're voting.
We're voting to approve this, if my understanding of.
So we're voting against us.
We're, we're voting to not.
So if we approve this. So we're saying. Then we are saying.
We are voting to approve the opt out retirement for zero teachers, I mean, I don't.
I make a motion to approve the opt out though.
Well.
Yeah, we don't know if you're, we don't want to allow it.
Right, so we say nay.
Oh, there you go.
So we're gonna vote nay, okay.
So we're voting, we're voting to approve no retirement opt out for teachers.
Yes.
Oh, see, I was gonna.
We're, we're making a motion to approve retirement opt out and then we're going to vote.
I, I think it's better to vote it in the.
To word it differently than what it is.
To approve that there will be no op, no retirement opt out for teachers. So that by voting affirmative, you're saying, I'll make the motion that we, um. How can I phrase that? That we do not, the motion is we do not offer an retirement opt out for teachers. And I probably should say whatever, whatever the school year is.
Two thousand eighteen nineteen. I'll second it.
Well, no, actually it's not, does that, oh, yes, two thousand nineteen, yes, yeah, no, it's, yeah, yeah, cause I was.
Okay, eighteen nineteen?
It's not for next.
No, it's nineteen twenty.
That's, yeah, that's what I was.
So the motion is not to offer retirement option out for teachers in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, of, of not offering, of yes, what Steve said?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Um, approve the board order.
I make a motion to approve the board orders in the amount of thirty-three thousand, two hundred forty-eight dollars and one cent.
I second it.
Discussion, could I just ask what the Heimann stuff was? The six hundred and something dollars each?
We, um, a couple of things, we're doing the new phonics program in K three two, which has been awesome. And we are piloting, um, FMP version three, we are using version one still. And we're looking as an SU to go to version three.
That was totally for my benefit. I mean professionally.
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? And those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstain, future agenda items?
Yes, um, I had talked to Bill about this and wanted to bring it up to the board about. Our use of the rec board for our athletics versus an athletic director like all the other elementary schools in the district. Years ago, we went, everything changed, we used to have the AD when Steve was there. And then we went to the rec board to do this and I think we need to discuss this as a board.
However.
It's, it's just a future agenda.
So that it can be discussed.
Okay.
I would like a little more time for VSBA the next time, if that's.
Okay. Uh, board communications and I believe that brings us to a German. Uh, board communications, and I believe that brings us to a German.